I'd like to call this meeting in order. It's a joint meeting between the Allendale County Council and the Allendale Town Council. It's an emergency meeting. We called us yesterday. Sheriff Tom Carter felt like it was necessary for us to come together and evaluate the situation we have with the town police and the Allendale County Sheriff's Office. Before we get into all that, I want to ask Mr. Bill Robinson to give our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. Oh, Heavenly Father, we be seated as we gather at this time of the day, asking for that continued guidance with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as we partake in the governance of Allendale County and the town of Allen, Allendale. These are all blessings we ask in our holy and most merciful name we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, we're going to do a legal question first. Mr. County Attorney, prepare a session of a quorum. This is County Council call us. I would assume we have a quorum here, do we have to include the Town Council in this quorum?
You do not have to include the Town Council in your quorum, no.
Okay.
And they need a quorum, I reckon, for them to transact business.
Okay.
Some others are outside.
You got a quorum?
I saw people pulling up. That's all I can tell you.
Okay.
We'll begin starting at six.
But your quorum would be your council.
The motion, we have a quorum out. We need motion, I do.
Make a motion that the county has a quorum.
Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Approval of agenda? Some overreapproval? Or, excuse me, I do need to add on, I need to amend the agenda. I do apologize, folks. I failed to add public comments to the agenda. We were rushing to get this emergency meeting started. I'd like to add public comments to this. If there are any who'd like to get up and make a comment, or anyone who signed a public comment. That's okay with the council?
Uh...
Excuse me, Mr. Cohen, this is the county meeting, not a town meeting.
I see joint meeting here. That's why we're here. And that's why I'm about to bring up the fact of a quorum. If this is a joint meeting, then you got to have a quorum for both parties. It says joint meeting at the heading of the title here, I mean. So, uh, you can't just...
We had three people, I think, coming up the hallway.
If you can tell, almost late, we'll handle it. That's fine.
How many y'all have on y'all's council?
Seven.
Seven? That includes the mayor?
Yes, seven total.
So you need four for quorum?
There'd be four of us and five of you.
Okay.
Is there anyone? Why does the county, the county senate, the senate say?
Oh, for four, it only takes four of y'all.
I'm just answering what Walter...
Made a matter of calling. Legal.
Chairman, you have a quorum for the town now.
They need to declare an emergency due to the notice.
I didn't hear that.
He said you need to declare an emergency due to the notice.
Is there anyone from the town of Allendale?
Yeah.
Is everybody here from the town of Allendale that's going to participate? Do you have a quorum?
Yeah.
Make sure, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen, you sat aside. Do you have a quorum?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's redo it again, y'all.
I'll make a motion that we have a quorum.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes? All right, it's passed. All right. Before we approve the agenda, I was going to add public comments to the agenda, and I hate to get this meeting out, I've skipped it. So I'd like to add public comments. Does anyone who has anything they want to say? No, no motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion that we accept the agenda?
As it is?
The, um...
amended.
amended agenda.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Town Council?
Yes. All right.
Oh.
With the vote.
All right. All right. Approved. All right. So let's just add public comments after welcome. That's okay with everyone? All right. Well, okay, from everybody, again, as I said in my invocation, I just want to thank everybody for, I'll call the order, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Um, it's come, a lot of phone calls about the situation with the police force in the town of Allendale, and a lot of comments to, from the citizens of Allendale, and Tom, Sheriff Tom Carter, who's sitting in the back, who called me yesterday, concerned about the amount of overtime we're spending. And I felt like we all need to get together and see if we could come to some financial help for the county without having to pay this overtime. With that being said, um, any public comment? Anyone like to say anything? Anybody feel out a slip or anything, or? No one? Okay. All right. All right. With that being said, Sheriff Tom Carter, you're first on the agenda. Thank you, sir. Thanks for coming out, Tom.
Yes, sir. Try that some more, man. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
As Chairman said, yesterday afternoon around three, I called him with a concern. And the concern is, as everyone know, except me here, I should know, that the chief of police resigned in Allendale last Wednesday, which brought on a burden for the sheriff's office, 'cause with the chief gone, then I had to assume the duties of the police department. I called Chief Keel, and we discussed it. And, um, we came to the agreement that they were going to try and get some agencies down there to back me up, to assist me with how I'm going to do this other time. Um, and which he did. And we had a meeting about two weeks ago, the chairman, um, Mr. Conley, Bill, at the admin office with that, um, the guy that doing the consulting, not consulting, but getting the study together. And I mentioned it then, that maybe the county and the Town Council need to get together and meet, because this, this transformation going to put a burden on the town, on the county with overtime, a big burden. Because, see, I don't have a five people, so definitely I have nothing really to cover the county, plus trying to cover the town also. But I have no choice. I got to do it. So Chief Keel worked out, they worked out a schedule, and they sent me, I got a schedule with them. I'll have like three, two, three SLED agents, and another agency, might be Triple P, that's a published parole for y'all, know it. Uh, DNR and the Highway Patrol. We got, they got to schedule the work every night in the town of Allendale. So we're in, in Allendale. And their function is to back us up. And any call that come about in the town of Allendale, a deputy got to go or use a tool, whatever's available. And they will assist us, anything that's happened on that call. That's their, that's their purpose of being here, to be assistance.
Sheriff, may I ask, um...
Right.
I need to interrupt you, but they're going to be here full-time? Are they going to be in here, or are you going to have to call them as backup? I mean, are they going to be...
No, no, no. They will be here. They, they, they come to my office every afternoon at three.
Okay.
We get together, we have a quick briefing on what to look out for tonight, or what they want to do, and who they going to follow. Because then the calls come in, the deputy's going, and they're going too.
All right, so we got deputies and those guys out there?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Uh, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Sheriff, were you aware of the fact that the town had submitted a request of SLED to cover prior to the resignation of our chief, and they responded, it was hand-delivered to the gentleman in Columbia, I'm thinking, maybe that one?
No, you took it to, um, Captain Eam, over in Baltimore.
But are you aware of that?
Yes, I was.
And their response was through our chief indicating that they would support you?
Right.
Them, and just, what other agency you said this is now?
No, I said you got other state agencies that could spare people to come to help with this patrolling of the town.
Okay, so there's a collection of...
Yes.
How many, three or four?
Yes, you got, you got SLED, I got a schedule here. You got SLED, you have, uh, DNR, you have Triple P, and you have Highway Patrol.
Triple P, what's that?
Public parole.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
All right. Um, so anyhow, that's what's going on right now. But my concern is deputy is going to have to be out with SLED, because SLED is not going to initiate, uh, stopping nobody unless they have to. They're not going to initiate, um, go into domestic calls, a deputy will have to be there, because he going to have to do the incident reports and take all the information. They're not going to do that. They're just backup, they're assistance, and that's all they do, is back us up. And which, but that, then, I don't know what we would have did, because, like I said, I only have five guys connected with county and with the town. So that's the best thing we could come up with to make sure everybody is protected, to get them, the people in here. But like I said, it's going to bring a tremendous burden to the town, I mean, to the county. And I felt, 'cause I got, I feel, I feel good with the security for the patrolling. I feel good, the way they got it set up. But I had to make some changes in my schedule, um, because like I said, they come in at three and they leave at three in the morning. Well, as you know, the deputies going in, so I changed our schedule to match. They, so we come in nine in one at nine o'clock instead of three o'clock. Okay? Then from three o'clock to six, I got another, a deputy will come on and go from six till, I mean, from three until eleven, to cover that gap between there before the town officer come in in the morning. We still have four that works day shift. And then during the daytime, the guy who ever is out backs him up if you get into something. But the problem is the nights, and this where the overtime will come in, and that's why I suggested that the two councils get together and work out something to reimburse the county. Now, looking at it the way the schedule is running, if it stays this way, there, there shouldn't be a whole lot of overtime, but there's going to be overtime. There's nowhere around it. And so that was my thought, looking down the road, that the two of y'all need to get together and set out and come up with some kind of financial assistance back to the county. And I'm not a financial person, I'm the security person, so I'm not going to get involved in that. But that's the reason behind it. It's me, I mean, calling my chairman. Yes, sir.
Okay, you're talking three entities here that's going to be involved. And you're looking at overtime for how many of those three?
None of them. None of those state agencies.
None of the state?
None of the state agencies, just the county guys.
Will there be any contributions by those agencies from a funding perspective, or are they coming in, relying on the funding of the county, and...
No, no, no. The state agencies, when they come to assist the county, you don't have to pay them.
Okay.
Just like SLED, you come in, you don't have to pay them. If they can afford the people to send, then they send them. That's what was the problem and the confusion, because everybody's short, and there's so much stuff going on in every county, they spread thin. But they was able to work out a schedule to have people here every night for us.
Okay, so you're seeking assistance for the sheriff's overtime, the sheriff's department?
Yeah, that's it.
The sheriff's department's overtime?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm trying to follow you.
I understand. Yes, that's what, that's, that's what the call was to the chairman. They're working something out with you all for the overtime that the deputies are doing in the city. Yes, sir.
Tom, do you have any idea in terms of the amount of money, any estimate? And, and I know maybe...
Well, we had to first see how the first, the first pay period goes, to see what kind of hours they made.
Are we looking at, say, just off the top, forty-six hours overtime per week, all week?
You said forty?
Forty or sixty hours of overtime per week?
It may not even be that much. It may not be that much. You know, it all depends on what's goes, what's going on.
All depend on the issues that come up.
Yeah, that's what comes up next, next Sunday. That was an all-day thing, with that, um, battalion. And, um, so if you can't, just clamp it down and say, it's going to be twenty hours, thirty hours, it all depends.
At what point would...
What I can to make it, to make it a minimum as possible.
At what point will you have a fix on that? I mean, it's going to take a couple of weeks, it's going to take a month, you know, give us some kind of idea so, you know, we can discuss...
I don't know. I can't really give you an idea. Because see, I can't read the future, so I can't really give you an idea.
So we have to wait until that time lapse, and then you...
No, I should, I should know something, you chief. Uh, you know, we, once we're on a week, we can see how it's going now, and what kind of hours it's going to run. Right now, the schedule I got, it, it shouldn't be a whole lot of overtime, but it's going to be overtime. Now, the overtime now that the county is paying my people ain't going to mess with overtime that we come out, if somebody had to come out for y'all. So you can't, just look at it like that. Because like I said, about the nine to three, that's, that's what I know, that I know what ship was running, but it was running at this timeframe.
Explain that a little bit, though. He says, somebody got to come out and tell us. I mean, we're part of the county entity overall.
Yeah, we're part of the county entity.
But you're segregating us now.
You know, I'm not segregating y'all. Y'all always been segregated, because the town always had their own department, so they always been segregated. The town always had their own department, they always did their own thing.
Okay, so is Fairbrank segregated too?
Yeah, if you look at it that way.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, because Fairbrank got their own department down there.
But both entities pay county taxes.
Sir, like I said, I'm just talking about the security part, I'm not getting into the...
I'm not trying to get into, no, I'm not trying to get into an argument back and forth, but I'm...
No, no, I, I, I'm not going to.
I don't mind, I, I... Mr. Sheriff, please, I apologize if I'm coming off brutally or whatever. I'm trying to understand. What you...
Now, like I said, here's going to be some hours that the deputies will have to work the time. Those are the hours I'm talking about. I can't say how many it will be, because I don't know.
But Sheriff, let me say, we're not going to go back and forth with this thing here. We're not going to be here all night. You've given us the plan, the hours that you were stating, that the deputy who's not being paid by the county that comes out to assist the town of Allendale, we have a responsibility at the town of Allendale to assist with those, the compensation.
Right, that's what...
Because we don't have, we're not paying four, five officers that normally we have on the ship, we should be able to assist the county with paying that deputy who comes out for those hours. If you can get those hours to Ms. Fitz, then we'll go from there.
Like I said, I should be able to...
Yes, sir. We're not going to, we're not, we're not going to prolong this thing, we're not going to kick the cane down the road. This is something needed for the citizen. We thank the state, we thank you for taking the initiative. We as the council, we are getting together, we got a council meeting coming Tuesday night. You can get with Ms. Fitz, and y'all work out something as part of, of Mr. Goodson.
Idea of what...
Y'all work out something together, so we can move forward. The safety, right now, the dollar's not of essence.
Right.
The safety of the people is what we're concerned about. I like what I've seen from the last couple of nights here in the town. Uh, we understand from the meeting with SLED that this is not going to be a long period of time. So I have to give my counsel to make sure that we do what we supposed to do in order to move this process even faster to where it needs to be. So I'm saying to you, Sheriff, we're not going to hold you up there all night. Give it to Ms. Fitz, and we move forward. And Ms. Fitz, you give it to Mr. Goodson, we move forward, and that's what the town is going to do. Okay?
Okay, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, sir, since Mr. Smith is speaking for the council, as he normally do, I would like to get understanding for me, the mayor. Okay? Could you answer the question that I asked you? Is there going to be a timely, uh, fashion, I mean, fashion for us to know about when and how much we need to, you know, because what you're saying now is a general, you're making general statements. We need as soon as possible...
You're asking something I can't get...
Well, hold on, hold on, just hear and understand me, and you will understand where I'm going with this. with this, as he indicated, we have a meeting on Tuesday night, I'm hearing you saying that you're gonna have something shortly for Ms. Fitz?
I'm gonna try to have something about Tuesday night, that's an idea of what it's gonna be.
Okay, you saying now?
Yes, sir.
I don't think we need to get into a flat rate fee, it's whenever the hours our sheriff comes to town work, that's what you're gonna get billed.
How do we get a meeting?
I don't know, you don't have any, how much time in your mind?
How do we get a meeting to find out how much we, and we gotta come up with, is what I'm trying to?
When I, when I?
Like you said, they gonna do a trial run at this thing, see what?
That's what, right now, that's what we're doing, to see if it, if this gonna work.
I'm not kicking it, I just wanna find out how much we wanna be involved.
I can't, I can't have to tell you, and you can't, you can't.
Well, anything Tom would say at this point is, is mute, because he doesn't really know. If we can, because it's gonna be based on the situation that occur on a daily basis or weekly basis, and from that number, you can make your adjustment on what you're gonna pay, it's, it's not rocket science, we just gotta get some feel for it and just move forward, and I think that's basically what we wanna say to, to the town, to the council.
It had been pretty quiet, because I rode through the town last night, you thought you was in cemetery, it was so quiet, all over them razor roadway, all the shooting and stuff going on, and the people all out in the street, it was quiet, and they quiet because they know that we arrived this cap, I mean, the town, they see the Slade agents, could I tell them, make sure you be very visible, they see DNR, they see the Highway Patrol, so they know something is up, and it just, not, all that noise you hear in the nighttime, all them live-running cars racing up and down the street, stand up and that's going on there, I don't know how long it should, before it starts back.
Um, just because as, on the Allendale Town Council?
Yes, ma'am.
Would be like to say for clarity purposes, so, for your deputies, and whatever shifts or time they're working for the county, that time for the town will be clearly stipulated separately, what they're doing for us.
Already doing it.
Okay, we just wanna make sure we have a clear definition between the two.
Mr. Chairman, I think?
Yes, sir.
I think, uh, at this point, we just gotta come to an agreement with the town, that hey, they will, uh, or they are receptive in picking up the overtime costs that will be occurred by Sheriff Carter and his deputies.
With clarity, Mr. Robinson, the overtime calls, like the sheriff was saying, that deputy that, that is not working for the county at that time.
Exactly, that's already been clarified, it's only for that overtime in which he or she is working for the town.
Yes, sir.
I think he already said that that's being separated, so I think what we need from, I think we need from both councils, or especially from the council, is to say, yes, we will be responsible for that cost, and I think, once we get that, we can, we can wrap it up, can't we?
I, I think for safety concerns, whatever it takes to take care of our folks, that's what we need, need to do and have to do, so we don't have a choice, if we want this coverage, if we want the quietness that we've already experienced, I see no sense in hashing it to death, because it's either, we're gonna either pay, or we're gonna pay the price for not paying.
Absolutely.
So Chairman, good, good, in the consensus of the town of Allendale, um, I would like for y'all to work with Ms. Fitz, yes, we'd be willing to move forward with the situation, and we're gonna do whatever we gotta do to move forward and make sure that our citizens are safe at this time, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yes, sir.
I don't know where he's getting this information about a consensus, because I didn't hear a vote here, maybe they said something among each other, but?
Well, I think we need to talk a little bit more about what's the actual compensation gonna be before we start agreeing.
I mean, that's what I'm, I?
I mean, also, I mean, all of our deputies are in overtime, even in the county job, so I see if there's anything in the county, they pay time and half.
May I ask a question, are we here, are we here to have a meeting, you understand?
Again, let's call this meeting in order. Mr. Colan, go ahead, now proceed, please.
I'm trying to understand, and I'm hearing different words about a consensus on one thing, and I've not heard any vote here, but, uh, it seems like there's some exclusions made, and we, we're in a hurry here, I'm not hearing enough numbers, I'm hearing, they say don't kick the can down the road, I thought when we came down here tonight, we would've had some figures, we would've had something to go on, but right now, we've gotta go back and decide on whether, you know, I know we're gonna participate, but how much are we gonna participate, what do we, what do, what is the burden on us, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, but these things have to be discussed, you'll have to discuss the same thing.
Coming from, coming from me, Matthew Connelly only, not the council, but I think, in a, if the sheriff is in agreement, y'all pay the time at, based on time and a half, because all his deputies are on overtime every week for county work.
Okay, now you're getting citizens, now you're getting?
That's just me talking.
Okay, okay, that's what I'm talking about.
When you talk about overtime, you're talking about time and a half, with?
They're getting that, just on county jobs.
Yeah. Okay, first of all, if I may speak as the chairman, first of all, we not determined what overtime is, if we have a, if we have a deputy, if I have a deputy, we, we don't have a deputy only at three o'clock in the morning till eleven o'clock the next morning, so the county, so only we pay, we paying a deputy's overtime, or is the town gonna pick up that deputy's salary, that's my question, my second question for this is, what kind of, we had to make sure we go, the town, counties can get paid for this, my third thing is, we need to absolutely ensure that the citizens of the town of Allendale are safe, that's the most important thing, and if you have to bring two deputies out three o'clock in the morning, somebody's flipping the car, because they don't have a police officer, because their police officer don't work from today, I mean, what is the town of Allendale, or is the county gonna pay for, for the deputy coming out to oversee this, if you've got, if you gotta have two deputies, are they paying the overtime, are they paying the salary, are they paying the overtime?
The deputy that comes out at three, fulfilling that gap between three and six, that three hours of time, once he hit six o'clock, their man coming out, he's on back on county time, those three hours, that's what the crucial thing.
And I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem with any of that, my problem, my main concern is, and the reason I called this meeting is because the citizens of the town of Allenale be safe.
Right.
Mr. Colan, if I may address you, you said on radio, on my radio show, that you knew this was coming for a year, Robert was gonna resign, and you've put it into a crisis situation for the county, because the town had done what they're supposed to do.
Okay, no reason for that if I may respond to that.
Please do.
The gentleman indicated to me that this is what he planned on doing, and I asked him whether or not?
Or if you know for a year, why, why hadn't it been handled before, then why, why are we in emergency meeting on a Wednesday night, or Thursday night?
I submitted that resignation when I was told to by that gentleman, he said, hold on to it, I was not the only one that received the resignation, I submitted the resignation when he gave me permission to do so.
I just feel like the county's been put in a situation, we're gonna handle it, because I want citizens to be safe, and all these county, I want citizens of all the county to be safe, that's my objective in this whole thing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I speak?
Yes, sir.
If we can allow your attorney, along with our attorney, to do an agreement, to make sure that we have in writing what we're discussing tonight, so we can make sure that this thing can follow to the T.
I think these, I agree with you, I think, legal guys get involved with it, I agree with you.
The town of Allendale will, without a shadow of a doubt, participate, they will make sure that this bill is paid, the point of contact will be Ms. Fitz, as far as the payment and moving forward, so that's what is the town's point of contact, we'll be moving forward on this issue, Sheriff Carter, if you have any issue in reference to the town of Allenale, you contact Lee Fitz.
Okay.
All right, do we need to bring you legal guys, y'all know what y'all know and I don't, but do we need to bring this to a vote for, between the town and the county, I mean, tell me exactly how it works, I honestly do not know, God, don't claim to be a lawyer.
What did the county meet again?
Sir?
When did the county meet again?
Third Thursday.
Third Thursday of the month.
Allenale meets, town meets on Tuesday.
It's coming Tuesday, so we'll meet following Thursday, Thursday, two weeks from Thursday, I think, if I'm not, is that?
Two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today, oh, that's two weeks from now, I'm sorry, yeah.
We can have an MOU, we can establish by early next week.
All right, you guys need to vote on individually during the town council meeting, do you do it here, where, how does that work, Walter, Mr., I'm sorry, I'm gonna apologize.
I think each council would have to vote on?
Individually, okay.
In this joint meeting?
Where you can.
Yeah.
I mean, I would.
I think we're having?
I mean, you just wanna put in theory, and then?
I mean, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to do, all legal.
Y'all will have to confirm it, you know, to make sure it's what y'all want.
I think we're here, and it is legal, I like, I would think we need to go ahead and take a vote, and I make a motion for, in the, in the behalf of the county, that we that we enter into MOU with the town of Allenale, in reference to the overtime for deputies that will be patrolling and protecting the town of Allenale affected immediately, and the details, monetary or financial transaction will be, uh, given at a later date, that's my motion.
All in favor? Nays, motion's passed.
And hopefully the town will do the same.
Tom, Mr. Stewart, you got to make sure everybody in the county's?
Well, regardless of what y'all work out?
Y'all gotta make them.
Do we meet to Sheriff here, or do we meet to out here?
I mean, we made it to, to, to anybody here, I think he can make it to you.
Offer to Mr.?
Yeah, it'll be coming from y'all, to your council, the only one that can vote on it.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we come into a MOU with the county for overtime for the deputies who are working, who are assisting the town of Allenale during that time period, and also that Ms. Lea Esther Fitz be the point of contact for the county, for the town, to the county.
Second.
You've heard the motion, and it's properly moved and second, uh, is there any discussion about this motion or questions, if not, you're ready to vote, all in favor, let it be known by a sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposes by a sign of no, no opposes, ayes have it, motion carried.
That would be said, no?
Make a motion.
Sheriff, I do have one question.
Almost, Phil.
I'm from municipal judge in, in Brunson, and we actually don't have a police force there, and they contract with the, um, county, sheriff's department down there, um, and the issue is, when y'all make cases, which way, which court you gonna send them to?
Magistrate.
Hmm?
The magistrate.
Magistrate, yeah, okay, so you know, without a police force, you don't need a court.
Well, we have our, our, must speak.
Go ahead.
Uh, we have our captain that is working at, uh, shifts, or whatever cases that he make, they go before.
How many police do y'all have left? Two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so his cases would still go to your court, that's what I was asking, the cases y'all made, y'all sent to the magistrate?
Yeah, it's like right now, two of the deputies are over there to a fight somewhere on the other side of the town, and whoever get charged, they'll go to the magistrate.
Okay.
Yes.
So the deputy right there, case goes magistrate, y'all right, y'all, they go to the city, the judge, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I'd like to ask Mr. Sanders and the town attorney, in the MOA that y'all have, are we open to discuss actual compensation, numbers, figures?
Well, we won't really have them that quick.
I mean, per hourly, I mean, I think the sheriff could probably get you an hourly rate.
Right.
They have to get you an hourly rate, um, like I said, the main thing is, uh, I know that's gonna be automatic, three hours every night, same days a week, um, just like tonight, the, uh, the town don't have them for you, so right now, like I said, deputies over there working, but they're working on shift for the county and shift for the town, on the high, y'all work that out.
That's what?
That's, that's, I will pay you over that out, because see, they over there now, at a fight, um, you know.
But doesn't it depend on your?
But they're on my, they're on my schedule.
Your, your officers get different amounts, don't they, because they have different salaries, don't they, they don't all get the same?
Well, it's like?
Hourly rate, really? I think what Tom's trying to say is, if they're, if you got, the town doesn't have a police, that was my concern, the town doesn't have a police officer on duty right now, we've got two deputies over there on county time, is, is what his concern is, am I correct?
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that kid wouldn't get paid, would they, I mean, if they already working, they don't?
They scheduled, that's the way I see it, but I don't know that anybody else will see.
You can't double them.
They scheduled, they're already on the schedule, if I got to bring somebody in off that's not scheduled to work, those are the hours that would go to the town, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Sure, that makes, that makes sense.
Once we establish if it's gonna be regular time or overtime, however it goes, um, all you have to do is submit us the hours they work and how much it costs, and submit that to Ms. Lee, and we would move forward and make sure it can pay.
So I wanna ask this question.
Mr. Goodson?
Question to him.
Mr. Goodson?
Um, and the chair, I've spoken about this before, I think you're keeping a separate timesheet for?
Yeah, it's noted on the timesheet.
And I'm gonna have in our account, in our payroll system, a line item, they're keeping a separate timesheet for the town, the town's time, and so I'll be able to bring that out.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, um, Sheriff, I know before, because, you know, when the county citizens used to complain that they didn't have twenty-four hour coverage, your people would go in, what, at midnight, and then they would come back out, and they will call, is that, is that something similar here to kinda like with the scheduling that you're doing, or is this gonna be totally different?
Only time they would come back out, well, see, like I'm saying, um, if that man get in trouble from three to six, yeah, they're coming back out, they come back out to assist him, um?
Because I just wanna make sure, because you know, you already had them working a certain kind of way anyway, just wanna, in my mind, I don't know about nobody else, but in my mind, I just wanna make sure that I understand how you're running this new schedule that you're proposing, that like Tom Counselor Taylor said, it's not kinda crossing over the same kinda schedule you already kinda had out.
Right, um, and like I said, right now, um, Slade and I agree, just, we, we run a trial base, see if this gonna work, you may have to change it up, this is not in concrete yet, because, you know, this thing happened all of a sudden, all of a sudden, and it caught people off guard, especially me.
And we are in the process of trying to build that.
I know, um, and by the way, y'all Tuesday night, Slade will be there, it will be, um, Captain Neil out, uh, whatever, I don't know who is coming with him, but I know he's coming to speak to you all about it, so everybody, I know, everything started, trying to keep everything, everyone the same shit of music, because I came and to the, the town hall and I talked to Ms. Fitz, I said, I knew you would get a lot, a lot of calls about what's going on, so as I learn, and as we get things done, I will keep you informed, so everybody will be on the same shit of music.
Mary Colan, you had something you wanna add to it?
Yes, I have, uh, an observation, not so much a question, but, um, in looking at the overall picture of this overtime deal, you're gonna have various different officers from various different levels of pay scale coming in, working, are you gonna pay them, if you have a captain that's available tonight, and he's making twenty-five dollars an hour, and you're paying him, uh, thirty-seven fifty for overtime, and then tomorrow night, you have a corporal coming in, he's paying eighteen dollars an hour, are you gonna pay on a different scale for the overtime per the person, or you gonna blanket it across and pay overtime at one rate for this particular job, this is a special job, it's not like this is their normal routine, so how are you gonna fluctuate with whoever's gonna be working?
It will, it will be, if one of my privates come in, he turn the overtime sheet, he get paid by his, um, salary, if it's a captain, he get paid by his salary.
That's all I'm asking, I, I, I thought maybe?
No, I'm not, I'm not putting no blanket.
I think you got to do it the way you're doing.
Right.
Change a little time.
For the officers, you can't cut their pay, and they're, they got to get them time and a half.
One other question, in line with who's gonna be working in that hierarchy, um, how will they be selected, will they volunteer for this, or will their superiors, uh, relegate or delegate them to this, or, uh, has that been worked out?
What they doing what they did, they delegated certain officers who was, who could be available, but they had to go to all three of them to find, you send me whatever you can, you send me whatever you can, that's how they got picked, and Slade sent one supervisor every night with his, with their people, he supervised them, because they stayed employees, and they come under me, and that's how it is. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I gotta be realistic, and I gotta make sure that we all, uh, gotta treat everybody fairly, if the officer that is working for the town for those three hours, and that other deputy's already going in, he done finished his shift, and he gotta come back out to assist that officer for the town of Allendale, we should be responsible for paying that officer coming back out.
That's the way I'm gonna sit it in?
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we clear?
I agree with you on that.
I wanna make sure that we clear that we carry our weight in this own ordeal, so if that officer has to come back out to assist for the town of Allendale, he will be compensated by the town of Allendale.
What about the sheriff, y'all compensate him?
The county guy.
Is there anything else?
I think that'll do it, anyone else have any comments? All right, I think we had a motion on Florida Attorney, Mr. Robinson, hours ago? I think we had a motion on Florida adjourned, Mr. Robinson, hours ago.
I like we did.
Yes, sir, I'll sign that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Nays?
Uh, Mr....
Oh, I'm sorry.
Because Mr. Cohen was talking.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Larry.
What happened, it's up to y'all, you said you have an executive session on here.
We just made a motion, we don't, I don't think anything going to executive session.
Look, I don't know, I'll just follow you, sir.
No. Executive session.